Okay.
That sounds serious.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's. Years of.
Thank you.
Where and there. So it's, uh, yeah.
Start call the roll.
About three weeks.
Call the vote.
Uh, Jason Blair. Kathy Griffith. Here. Melissa Hunt. Here. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. It's not here.
Glenn Lewis, yeah.
Um, item B is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is a presentation of the FBI LIDA Agency Trilogy Award to the Moore Police Department by Chief Operating Officer Michael Robinson.
All right, I guess I'm here. Well, greetings, everyone. How's everyone doing? Uh, first of all, it's truly an honor to be here, especially with Chief Gibson and his staff. Uh, and I'd like to say a few things regarding the FBI LIDA Trilogy Award that they will be receiving this evening. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying greetings to Vice Mayor Hunt, uh, members of the Moore City Council, Chief Gibson, members of the Moore Police Department, and other distinguished attendees, including all visitors and residents of Moore. On behalf of the FBI LIDA President, Chief Donna McNamara, our Executive Director, Jacque Batiste, our Executive Board, I bring you greetings from the men and women, including our many partners and members across the U.S. and beyond. As the Vice Mayor has stated, I'm Michael Robinson. I'm the COO of FBI LIDA and very excited to be here this evening. Today, it is truly my honor to be here, representing FBI LIDA, and to present the FBI LIDA Agency Trilogy Award to the Moore Police Department here in Moore, Oklahoma, which is a very distinguished accomplishment, I might add. FBI LIDA presents law enforcement agencies across the country whose entire command staff have completed the FBI LIDA Trilogy Leadership Series with the FBI LIDA Agency Trilogy Award. The FBI LIDA Trilogy Leadership Series consists of three of our flagship courses, which are Supervisor Leadership Institute, Command Leadership Institute, and the Executive Leadership Institute, which in this case means all members of the Moore Police Department Command Staff completed these courses. In 2023, which is the year the Moore Police Department completed their Agency Trilogy Award, there were forty-nine agencies across the country to receive the Agency Trilogy Award, with the Moore Police Department making it now seven agencies in the state of Oklahoma that have received the Agency Trilogy Award. Since the inception of the Agency Trilogy Award, there have been one hundred and twenty-two recipients. Today, we are pleased to present Chief Todd Gibson, Deputy Chief Blake Green, Major Ted Belling, Major Kyle Dudley, Captain Kevin Brown, Captain Kyle Johnson, Captain Christopher Maddox, Captain David C.
You got it.
Okay. Captain Wesley Yost, uh, the Moore Police Department Staff and the residents of Moore, Oklahoma, the FBI Lida- Lida Agency Trilogy Award, and I must say, congratulations to the Moore Police Department.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, if I could just for a second, I won't, uh, hold up the meeting any longer, but we do appreciate the support we get from, uh, city staff, city leadership, and city council. It's, uh, imperative to what we do. We understand that, uh, any organization rises and falls on culture, and we understand that leadership drives culture each and every day, and this is an important part in developing leadership for a positive culture in the Moore Police Department, so thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item two is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February fifth, twenty twenty-four. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks meeting held January eighth, twenty twenty-four. Item C, receive the minutes of the special parks board meeting held January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Item D, accept, accept public water, sewer, paving, and drainage improvements to serve Broadmore Heights Edition, Section Two, being north of, north of Southeast Thirty-Fourth Street and west of South Bryant Avenue. Item E, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four in the amount of six million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith? Yes. Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, item passes. Item three, consider approval of an amendment to the agreement with Aging Services, Inc., funded through the Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Uh, Vice Mayor and Counsel, the city entered into an agreement with Aging Services in September of twenty twenty-three to provide home-delivered meals to our seniors, uh, funded with CDBG funds. During our annual monitoring, it was found that the cost per unit of two twenty-five defined in the agreement was incorrect. In the application for funding, Aging Services requested the funding to subsidize half the cost of their home-delivered meals. The cost of those meals is five dollars, resulting in the cost per unit should have been two fifty. This amendment changes the cost per unit to two dollars and fifty cents to correctly align with the original request made by Aging Services.
It doesn't change the amount of?
No, the award still stays the same.
All right, very good. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item four, consider approval of a change order in the amount of five thousand, five hundred dollars to amusement restoration companies for the painting of the exterior of the Blue Water Slide at the Aquatic Center, at the Station Aquatic Center.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this is a change order for, um, the slides at the Aquatic Center. The original approval was on October second, and this is an additional part of the slides that need to be painted that was omitted last time. It's still under the second, um, price in the bid, so it should be fine.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item five, consider approval of agreement with WSB in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for professional engineering services for the design of Eastern Avenue Reconstruction Project from Broadway Avenue to Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this is the last design project that'll be awarded as part of the twenty twenty-three GEO Bond. Uh, WSB has been, uh, purchased and merged with a company called, or, uh, purchased EST. And so we recommend award, uh, that you award this pro- design project. EST has done the design to the north from, uh, Nineteenth Street to Broadway, and they're also doing Broadway itself designed. So it makes sense to have them go ahead and move forward. We'd recommend approval.
That would give me my question. Who's WSB?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item six, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford F- three fifty XL V-eight super cab from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars using State Contract SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, good evening. Excuse me. Item six and seven are companion items, and this is to replace a two thousand and eight Hanmer Control Truck for our officers.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item seven is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of an animal transport body from, uh, Swab Wagon Company in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, including shipping, as the most responsible quote.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this is the body for the truck in item six, and we solicited three quotes, and Swab was the most responsible one.
Most approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Um, item seven point one, consider awarding a contract in the amount of seventy-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars to Eminem Wrecking, Inc., for the demolition of the Tillison Cabinet Shop located at one thirty-seven Southeast Fourth Street for the construction and maintenance of the Southeast Street Railroad Underpass Project.
Recall that this was on council about a month ago, and the firm that was awarded the project was, uh, KC Demolition. Um, since that time, they have notified us, and the, the key member that would be doing the operation of the actual demolition of the properties, uh, has had a, uh, an injury accident. He's, uh, not capable of going forward and, uh, completing the project or even starting the project. And so we recommend that you award to the second, uh, lowest responsive bidder, which was Eminem.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We'll now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item eight is a consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held February fifth, twenty twenty-four. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item nine, consider authorizing budgeted purchase of a twenty twenty-three Ford F-two fifty extended cab from Bill Knight Ford in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars using State Contract Number SW zero three five.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, items nine and ten are companion items. This is to purchase, um, the truck for sanitation division. This will be used by our Polycot guys for the distribution of Polycots and pickups and exchanges.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item ten, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of a Bedrock Diamond Series Flatbed with Cage and Liftgate from Industrial Truck Equipment in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars using State Contract Number SW one oh six.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, this is for the cage and the lift gates that goes on the truck in item nine.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item eleven, consider approval of an outside city limits water and sanitary sewer agreement between the City of Moore and Sunny Lane Estates Mobile Home Park for the purchase of city water and the treatment and disposal of, um, sanitary sewer.
Uh, Vice Chairman and Trustees, um, the Sunny Lane Estates Mobile Home Park is located on the east side of Sunny Lane, um, about halfway between Indian Hills and Southeast Thirty-Fourth Street. And when we were constructing the project of the, uh, thirty-six inch gravity flow sewer line from the lift station at Thirty-Fourth to the lift station on Indian Hills, um, we obtained some property from the, the Mobile Home Park. And part of the, uh, deal was that we would allow them to have access to water and sewer whenever they chose to move forward with that. And at this point in time, they're ready to move forward with that option for themselves. They are still in the Cleveland County as a outside residence, and, uh, they would be paying the outside city limit rates, which are double what the inside are.
And I, I think there's, uh, about a hundred units.
There are a hundred units that would be tying on, and they're.
And that won't put any pressure on our water systems or anything? I'm assuming the new lift station should handle it.
Yeah, that does not create a problem for us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We'll now recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item twelve is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held February fifth, twenty twenty-four. Item B, approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for CBR number two zero five zero 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 one 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 eight to Timothy Kohler and authorize payment on the ad valorem tax rule. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We'll now recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting. Item thirteen is roll call. Will you please call the roll?
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair? Glenn Lewis? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here. Item fourteen is consent doc. Item A, um, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting held January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve. Sorry, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
A motion and a second. Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We'll now recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item fifteen is new business. Item A is Citizens Forum for Items Not on the Agenda. I have a few people signed up here to speak. Um, first, uh, before we get started, um, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Um, Barbara A. Johnson.
Hello, I'm Barbara Johnson. I live at two oh five South Old Bridge Road in the Old Bridge Estates on Fourth Street. We're here because we need to keep up with what's going on with this development. We did not know about the development until one of our former residents was at the planning committee, committee meeting on October the tenth. That former OSB resident called us and told us that we needed to be aware of this. Our OSB board members did not know anything about it. No OSB resident outside Mr. Murch's family knew about the development. We were really taken back by this. So we contacted Mr. Murch and asked him to meet with us. He met with us on November the second. We had sent an email out to our association October thirty-first. Any planning that we have made, any correspondence we make, we send out an e- email to our entire association, not to hide anything we are doing, but to keep everyone in our association informed. From the meeting with Mr. Murcha on November the second, he told us that he's going to build eleven houses, three-bedroom, two-bath, two- and three-car garage, sixteen to eighteen hundred square feet, and probably the exterior will be mostly brick and some hardy board. But he was supposed to get back with us to confirm the style and amenities of the houses. We asked Mr. Ver- Bercha to verify that the overflow from the water retention pond would not run into our creek. That is because we have a great deal of flooding in that creek, and we've had to reinforce our concrete bridge that crosses that creek because of the flooding. So we're very, very worried about the increased flooding from it. He said that it will not drain into the creek because it'll go into city sewer. We asked him to verify that for us. Mr. Murcha said that he will retain management of the HOA, and he will maintain the commons area that adjoins OSB and the fence around DM Estates and the houses with the standards established by the OSB bylaws. He said that he will build a two-foot retaining wall, and the fence will be built on top of the retaining wall. The fence will have brick columns with wood fence between the columns, similar to Windamere's fence. He also said that he would clean out his area of the creek, but he needed to verify the areas of the creek that belonged to his property. Now, the preliminary plan that he had brought with him doesn't match the conceptual site plan, so we had questions about that. Um, he said he would continue to keep OSB informed as development progresses of the HOA's by- bylaws. He said that the bylaws will contain ver- verbiage to clarify that the DM Estate, homeowners, family, guests, or renters of the property shall not have any access to OSB properties, the OSB pond, nor any OSB homeowner's properties. We have not talked to him since November the second. We've attempted to contact him to find out the progress, and we have not been able to reach him. So he has not responded to any of these questions or verified anything since November the second, as he said he would. We had thirty-plus people from OSB to prepare to attend the November sixth meeting. But then we were informed that the DM Estates was removed from the agenda. We were told that it would be heard again at the December twelfth planning meeting. So we started preparing for that. And we were in discussion with each others. We thought we were in good shape. And then we found out on December the eleventh, we were too late. That has actually put on the agenda for November the twentieth.
One minute remaining.
I'm sorry, what?
One minute remaining.
Okay. So we missed that. And, but we pulled up the minutes from the November the twentieth. And we were very concerned when we read that Ms. Wheatman said that the housing addition has similar nature to those surrounding areas. I'd, they'll be right next to us. They won't be across the street. They'll be right next to us. You're looking at maybe six to eighteen hundred square foot home on a small city lot. Then you look at our homes, our estates, forty-five hundred square foot home on an acreage, homes that are close to, to a value of a million dollars, over a million dollars. Our landscaping is ten percent of the value of our home, not to mention the property tax that we pay. We have huge investments out there, and we have worked and worked to keep our homes being something that Moore can be proud of. And then we have something come in next to us to say that it, those houses are comparable, similar to our estates? Does that, does a sixteen hundred square foot home on a little city lot sound like it's comparable to a forty-five hundred square foot home or larger that's on an acreage? Does that sound comparable? Does anyone have? I really want to know. Do you think that is comparable? We have huge investments that we are trying to protect, and we need help in, in protecting them. And the only way that we can do our due diligence is to come up here to these meetings, and we're going to have to ask you to keep us informed, because we have not been able to be informed the way that we thought we were. We, we sat back, and we thought that we are going to be contacted, that we were going to have conversations about this, but it hasn't happened. So we have asked, got to ask you to please keep us informed of what's going on with this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I also have Marcy Esen?
I'll do. I think so.
I'm Marcy Esen. I live at two oh one Alyssa Lane, Old Bridge, um, subdivision. I'm the Vice President of our HOA. As Ms. Johnson said, I was informed, um, about this development that had been approved by the Planning Commission by a former neighbor that lived, um, no one, that happened to be at the Planning Commission meeting. We had no idea that anything was being developed next to us. We, when we bought our property seven years ago, we were told that Old Stone Bridge was the elite neighborhood of Moore. This is what Moore wants to bring people into, to see this is what Moore's about. And now there's the twenty twenty, twenty forty plan where people are, oh, let's do mixed use. Let's put the smaller houses next to the big houses. I don't know about y'all, but I lived one mile away from where I live now, and it was a smaller subdivision. You had to make sure your house was locked. You had to make sure your cars were locked, because they're broken into all the time. We moved from there to a gated community because we wanted to feel, and I'm sorry to say this, but we wanted to feel protected. Now we find out there's a smaller subdivision, smaller houses going in. Some of them may be rented out, and I don't know about y'all, but I know the history of people who rent out. They don't always take care of property. What's, there's nothing to stop them from coming into our neighborhood. It butts right up to our neighborhood, literally up to the road coming into our neighborhood. Cleveland Heights, the planned community is right in the back of us. Y'all are buying up, the city is buying up all the land that butts up to our neighborhood. Elementary school, um, there's going to be commercial property, and then there's going to be the mixed-use houses are going to butt up behind us. And now I've been informed there's land in between our neighborhood. Our neighborhood forms a U-shape. The Horns own the property in the middle and backs up to a lot of our neighbors' backyards. And now I've been informed that they're planning, and we've tried to buy that land from them. They're planning on putting a development there. I just found that out tonight. This is something when developments are going on in the, the City of Moore should inform everybody, surrounding areas, so you can have an input from all of us into what's going, so we know what's going on, and you know how we feel about it, before y'all make a decision saying, oh, yeah, that's fine. We'll do that. There's a lot of low-income houses, middle-income houses in Moore. Like I said, ours is the more elite neighborhood, and we are hoping the surrounding area was going to be like that. We have Windamere, which is a nice neighborhood. They butt up to ours. And there's some nice homes on the other side, but in between is three point six two acres that they're going to put ten houses in. They're going to squish them in. There's not a lot of room, because part of it's in a flood zone. There's a creek running through in the back. The creek is the only thing that stops part of our property from this other subdivision. And now, if they're going to do Cleveland Heights behind us, and they're going, Horn decides they want to build a subdivision in the middle, we will be completely surrounded by lower-income houses, which we will, uh, short of putting up big, huge fences all around, nothing to stop anybody from coming in anytime they want. And I know kids, and people do that. We've had one neighbor, they bought a four-wheeler. Within hours, it was stolen out of their driveway because somebody was able to sneak in the gate of our neighborhood.
Forty seconds left.
Thank you. And kids have come through from the back way. So please let us know what's going on around us, and let us have, give input to y'all on how we feel about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Maggie Ricks.
Hello, I'm Maggie Ricks. I live at two oh eight South Old Bridge Road. Um, I'm here to also talk about, I'm, I'm from Old Stone Bridge, so I'm also here to talk about this. One thing I want to talk about is, we didn't really come here tonight so much to, like, grieve all of our stuff. We came here because there's been a lack of good faith, a lack of being told things were going to be done, such as we would receive conversations and work things out, and phone calls back, and it hasn't happened. We were willing to work. We were willing to meet. We wanted to have the meetings with Mr. Murchia, and we're the ones that instigated it, and the correspondence I gave you shows that our HOA, this is posted to the entire. And the correspondence I gave you shows that our HOA, this is posted to the entire HOA, which they're part of. So there's no way that he didn't know what the HOA was working on and doing. But what our main interest tonight is for us to talk to you to understand, we were left in the dark. We didn't have a chance to come represent ourselves. When we had 30 people ready to come, the meeting was tabled. We were told that the next meeting was going to be the next Planning Committee meeting, which was December 12th. And then, I don't know how it, I don't know exactly how it works, but y'all did the meeting, we weren't notified, we had no idea to be here. Then afterwards, we asked for a meeting with the city manager, we met with Elizabeth, another 25 people showed up. This meeting, there'd be 30-something people here, except we just came as a small group to talk to you, to ask you, to beseech you to please, please get us back on the agenda, have time with us, talk to us, help us understand what's going on. If there's rules and there's laws, we're all for that. But where we come from is that I've had my land for 25 years in Old Stone Bridge. I lived in South Oklahoma City. Moore used to be considered, and a lot of you were here then, Moore was considered ghetto poverty, not high class place to live, honestly. These people from Old Stone Bridge went out and risked a lot to build a nice neighborhood there. That nice neighborhood, we went hand-in-hand as partners with you, with the city. I can't tell you how many times y'all, or the mayor, or someone would ask to bring people to our neighborhood to show it to them. So we helped impact that Windermere was a nicer neighborhood, more taxes, more income, more retail. The same thing with the Rock Creek and everything else. That's what we want to continue to do. We don't think we're better than anyone else. We wanted to be partners, we want to be your partner. We want to help you continue more growing and growing and even getting better. So we, we do need your help on that. I do want you to be aware that we do feel like that we, you were not handled in good faith in that we, you see the notes that went out to the entire neighborhood, to everybody about our concerns, and the notes about what we were told would be done. Those things haven't been done. We can't even get someone to pick up the phone and call us back and have another meeting with us. They won't even talk to us from DM Estates or anything else. They've also told you in the last meeting, we watched the video and read the film, Mr. Blair asked him and said, have you talked to the HOA since the last meeting, which was the 6th? He said yes, he did not, did not talk to us. So this is why we come to you, we need your help. We need the city to help protect us. We don't know what they're building there, we don't know if he's going to do what he said, and if, if we're going to be protected. We are very scared, there's also a lot of flooding and areas going on. I have pictures of all the flooding, our neighborhood floods. They have to, that, if there is any, we were told when we met with Elizabeth, he told us that the water wasn't going to run into the creek. We were told opposite by the city. So we don't know what's going to happen, but right now, we've already spent thousands of dollars repairing our bridge. So that bridge is going to go out. We don't know what's going to happen, that's why we need your help. You need to help us, we want to personally, we'll be involved. I'll come to the meetings with the stormwater management, with the people that need to do approvals on this, because we're concerned. We're highly concerned. Where my house is by the pond, there were over 200 trees that were taken out on the tornado, okay? No place else was hit harder and destroyed the terrain and the erosion of the land and caused flooding more than that area except for Veterans Park. You fixed Veterans Park. Okay, fine, we have private property, but I also have your 2040 book that says you will work with us even if we have private property to help us get this back. The thing is, it's in the 100-year flood plan. The problem is, it floods three to four times a year now, because there has, it has changed. What FEMA approved was in February of 2013. That's what y'all are living off of, that's what everyone, or your worker guys are approving off of. But the tornado happened on May 13th and changed everything. So it's critical, critical we get this right. Anyway, we need your help.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing your concerns. I think that as far as Cleveland Heights goes, we've heard a lot of concerns about that, and I think there'll be public meetings and all of that. There's nothing set for that. As far as this goes, we can certainly work with Elizabeth on the drainage and keep you guys informed. All right, item, I guess I should ask, is there anybody else that hasn't signed up to speak that would like to speak? All right, item B is items from City Council or Trustees. All right, item C is item from the city manager.
First quick trip in the metro area opened last Thursday. Some of the council members were there, it was a very good opening. A lot of people were there that day, and as I drove by there on the weekend, it had good crowds Saturday and Sunday, so we're glad to have them in Moore.
All right, and item 16 is adjournment.
So move?
Second.
A motion and a second, will you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes, we're adjourned.